Hi, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, March 12th, 2019, the eve of the first snow day of 2019. Also, we just heard the news, breaking news, that tomorrow is a snow day for our teachers and parents, or not our parents, probably not, students. So, we'll see how this goes. It looks like we're forecasting a major snow event tomorrow. All right, so Laura, would you please call the roll?
Benford, Fuqua, Garcia, Gephardt, Marquess, Myers, Sargent.
Here.
All right, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, so welcome. Thank you for coming here and thank you for joining us from your homes if you're watching it from in Internet or television. I'd just like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. All right, so this evening, we'll start as always with our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Board President Marquess, members of the board. Board President Marquess, you stole my thunder a little bit in announcing the snow day, but we have called off school for tomorrow. You know, better safe than sorry. We think that the reports that are coming in could create pretty hazardous conditions for our students. We always want to make sure that we put safety first for our kids. And so, I know there's going to be lots of disappointed students across Boulder Valley School District tonight that we won't be having school tomorrow, but make sure everybody stays warm and stays safe. We will have principals reporting to buildings and I'll be in as well to just ensure that if any kids don't get the message and then show up, that we take care of them. And I want to really commend our team, Rob Price, Operations Team, Mygrados, Randy Barber, who've been working on getting our messaging out, make sure employees and everybody knows what's happening. And so, if you haven't heard, which in this day of social media, I don't know how anybody hasn't heard yet, but that is the status for tomorrow. I want to thank our district accountability committee. We had an opportunity to meet with them just recently in a work session, and I just want to commend them on their thoughtfulness and their ability to think and help hold us accountable around the tasks that they're associated with, and have just really appreciated their partnership throughout this year and look forward to working with them and through the priorities that were set and established in our work session as we move into next year. Last Thursday, I had an opportunity to attend the Broomfield Rotary Club, and I want to thank them for having me out. It was a great opportunity. I want to commend Mayor Randy Aaron's, who's really trying to put together some task force and get energy in Broomfield around supporting students with vaping. And I've committed to making sure that we're working with him and having our staff work with him and help them out in that effort, and so I really appreciated that opportunity. And there's two events that are coming up that I'd like to highlight. This Thursday, we'll have our Impact Awards, which I'm excited, it'll be my first Impact Awards event, where we'll be able to recognize classroom teachers, specialists administrators, classified employees, and volunteers, and that's Thursday. And then finally, board members, we have a scheduled visit next Tuesday at 9:00 AM to Warren Tech, and I'd encourage you, hopefully all of you can be there. I'm very excited about the potential we have in this district around expanding our CTE offerings, aligning our programs, our career pathways, our industry certifications to the workforce needs of this community. I think that some of these things will find their way into our new strategic plan, but I think this is a great opportunity to see a school that's done right. So I want to thank the folks at Warren Tech for hosting us and hope all of you can join me as we go there next Tuesday at 9:00 AM. And that's all I have.
Okay, board members, any questions or comments for Dr. Anderson?
I know it came out in an announcement about all the awards that many of our schools recently received from the state. I was wondering if you could address that just briefly? I think you were there?
Yes, I was there, and it was, I believe it was, gosh, it was last Tuesday or Wednesday where we went down to the Colorado Department of Education and for the John Irwin Schools of Excellence, and there's some growth awards. We were very well represented. I sent that out to the board. I think that we're planning on a way to publicly recognize those schools at a future event, so I'm working with communications on that. But it was nice to look around the room and be holding a really heavy roll of banners for Boulder Valley schools and know that we were well represented in so many of our schools doing so many things, both around growth and excellence.
Any other comments or questions? No? Okay, great. So now we're going to proceed to our next item on our agenda, which is public hearing and public participation. The board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board, number one, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Please limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. I don't think that'll be the case this evening. Number three, recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K through 12 students. So, there is a lighting system on the podium, starting at green when your two-minute starts, turning to yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turning to red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. So we're starting at 10 after 6:00. And also, if you do run out of time, remember you can always send us an email. We tend to read all of our emails, at least I do, but I think most of my colleagues do. And so, and then I'll start with Katie Farnin.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm getting over a cold. I'm here to ask you to honor the work that you did over the past six-plus months around due diligence with Ascent Classical Academies. I read the application, the BVSD Accountability Report, BVSD rulings. I was shocked at the laundry list of concerns that these documents showcased. This work that you did reflects months and months of investigation and searching for a way to make this particular school fit within the mosaic of the Boulder school system, and it just doesn't work. I share many concerns with the BVSD Board around transparency, ethical management of funds, conflict of interest, and lack of local oversight, but my biggest concern? Ascent claims that they will help close the education gap. However, they have yet to provide a plan for how they would recruit minority students. BVSD already has major work to do in this area, as you all know. How will Ascent help with that? If you look at the other schools under ACA, you will see that their diversity numbers fall well below the state and district averages, and I know that you know that because we researched it. Releasing them to CSI not only undoes the labor of this board and the labor of parents like me who are away from our families to fight this, but CSI is notorious for minimal oversight and accountability, and they will still be taking my tax dollars to fund their exclusionary operations. And I'm mad that they don't understand this. It is still our money, and it's public money that they would be using. Please do not release them to CSI. They could become a private school, and BVSD can find another classical curriculum that isn't so riddled with red flags. Thank you.
Okay, Brenda Jones.
I hope that by now you are all familiar with my family's story. I ask that you please keep it in mind when making your decision on the relinquishment of Ascent to CSI. I would like to make something very clear. I'm not asking you to relinquish Ascent to CSI so that I can raise children who do not have a love for all of our fellow human beings. I'm simply asking you to do so in order for them to have the opportunity to attend a school with an environment curriculum and culture they thrive in. I'm a proud first-generation Latina, product of two illegal immigrants from El Salvador. I'm a proud sister of a member of the LGBTQ community. I believe love should win each and every time. I believe people should be free to be who they truly are without fear of rejection. I believe in the freedom of expression and authenticity. I believe that we are all people and should respect each other and embrace our differences, for that is how we learn and grow as human beings. I've seen posts from the opposition stating ACA schools are low-performing based on CMAS scores. CMAS scores are not important to me. I almost opted our son out of testing in protest of your denial of Ascent. SAT scores, however, are very important to me in the majority of colleges. Golden View's SAT scores were 10th in the state with 100% student participation and an average score of 1220, only two points behind Fairview. That is not underperforming in the least. In fact, it proves the quality of education they provide. Relinquishing Ascent to CSI would not hurt any of those in opposition. Their lives would continue on just the same. Their children would continue attending the same schools. However, it would drastically change the lives of hundreds of BVSD parents who intend to enroll their children in ACA F this fall. I would change, it would change the lives of our two children for the better. My husband and I would have peace of mind and would no longer worry for our children who struggle in our neighborhood school. Despite not being an Ascent supporter, Chairwoman Schroeder still respected us as parents and valued our opinions by offering an alternate path. She gave the unbiased recommendation that you follow precedents and release ACA F to CSI. I hope you listen to her. Again, I'm not coming from a place of malice, but rather as a desperate mama bear pleading for you on behalf of my children. Please respect us as parents and hear our voices. Time is running out, our kids cannot afford to wait. Please don't let us go unheard again. Please relinquish ACA F to CSI. Thank you so much for your time.
Amira Mustian? Excuse me if I got that wrong.
Good evening, BVSD Board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak again. My name is Amira Mustian, and I grew up here in Boulder, and I love this community. I am now a mom, and two of my children now attend BVSD schools. I am also a former public school teacher, and I understand the challenges that schools face each and every day. I wanted to express my disappointment in the past decisions to deny Ascent Classical Academy at Flatirons and hundreds of families the opportunity to attend a school of our choice. BVSD does not currently have a classical education school, and for many of us, Ascent is the school that we choose. Boulder is a community that values and embraces diversity, and I am asking that you continue to promote these shared values by giving parents and children another educational option that we have been desperately asking for. You have the opportunity to increase the diversity within this district by providing a new educational opportunity for all children to thrive. I am also asking that you give Ascent the benefit of the doubt. They should not be prejudged, mocked, or unfairly labeled before they even open their doors. So I am asking as a parent, as a member of your community, and as a former teacher, that you please, please relinquish ACA F to CSI and give families the choice and opportunity that we deserve. I trust that you will make the right decision. Thank you.
Marie Clark?
I am here as a parent of three Boulder Valley School District little girls, and I am here again to urge you to relinquish Ascent to the state charter authority. I know that there's been some concerns cited over the governance structure of our school, and I wanted to directly address those with you tonight. As you know, our governor of Colorado is Jared Polis, and in 2004, he founded New America Schools. Now, this school has the same type of board governance that our school would have. So there is a network of schools in Colorado, one in Lakewood, one in Aurora, some even in New Mexico, and they all report, I guess you would call it, to one board, whatever, the board, like you guys are here today. Ascent School would have one parent board member for their approximately 700 students that would also report to a board over that network of Ascent Classical Academy schools. So, that is one, I understand, that's one parent board member for 700 students? But in contrast, as I see you seven sitting here today, you guys each represent approximately 4,285 students. And so, if it is a concern that one parent represents 700 students, maybe we could, should consider expanding the number of seats in this room, because it's quite a different ratio. The other thing I wanted to remind you was that State Board Member Angelica Schroeder asked you to consider relinquishing Ascent to CSI. I was there at that appeal, I heard her plea to you, and a vote to relinquish does not contradict the State Board's wishes. It complies with their intent, so please relinquish Ascent to CSI. Thank you.
Christine Johnson?
Hi, thank you for allowing me time to speak again tonight. I came to speak to you in January regarding the application then, and I used my time to read a statement from an educator who doesn't live in the district. I was pleased with your decision to deny the charter application that night, as well as the decision of the Colorado School Board, and I appeared before you tonight to ask you to yet again deny the Ascent Charter Academy's requests. And I'd like to remind you of the tremendous public outcry in January against Ascent. My name is Christine Johnson. I'm the co-chair of the Education Committee of the Boulder County Branch of the NAACP. I have degrees in elementary education and culturally and linguistically diverse education, and I live in Boulder, and I have three students enrolled in BVSD schools. First and foremost, I will state that I have to believe that every person in this room wants what is best for all children, and that through this process, we strive to achieve that. I'm not personally opposed to charter schools, but I do want to see all of our programs open, accessible, and supportive of all students. As a student and as a teacher of diverse students, I've found that diverse materials, which reflect on the complexity of our society, would best support all students as windows and mirrors. And to that end, I would hope that the Ascent curriculum would better include learning about a variety of people, and that all students would see themselves reflected in teaching materials, as well as have the opportunity to learn about differences. In light of Ms. Gilmarten's Medium.com article and what I've seen about the proposed scope and sequence, I'm not sure that's the case. Just because the school would not be overseen by BVSD administration by going to CSI doesn't mean that the students who live in our district don't deserve the kinds of anti-discrimination policies we so carefully forged. Please give all the students of this district, who'll be educated in public schools, the kind of protection that all BVSD students deserve. In addition, I want to point out that Jared Polis's schools are not run by a for-profit private entity, and that they primarily serve minority students, unlike ACA. Thank you.
Heidi Ganawal?
Thank you. I want to talk about the complaint I filed, but first I want to clarify, we are not a for-profit entity, Ascent Classical Academy, so that's not true. I want to speak about, publicly about a complaint I recently filed with the Boulder Valley School Board under a policy KE and in accordance with KER. My complaint is being made due to BVSD staff violating board policy, CBA, CBC. I'm a parent living in the BVSD area with three children now attending Superior Elementary and one that graduated from Monarch in 2013. I'm also an elected official on the Board of Regents at CU, and I know how important policy is to a board like yours. And violating policy, Mr. Superintendent, is not appropriate and not helpful for moving an agenda forward for our district. Our work with BVSD resulted in the BVSD Board of Education denying our charter application on January 22nd involving several policy violations that do not serve the public interest for transparency and accountability. My complaints relate to the following policy violations. Number one, BVSD staff violated BVSD policy, CBA, CBC, Paragraph 1F, by not providing BVSD board members information of major importance or significant to the activities of the school district. The same staff likely drafted the denial resolution knowingly citing concerns on which it had received additional information without informing the board of the accuracy of the resolution language. District staff also failed to provide adequate expertise and guidance on the charter application and contract process. The board included a number of items in this denial application that are negotiated in contract. The board was not properly advised on this. This should be a significant concern to the board and undermines the public trust that the board is making fully informed decisions. The BVSD staff also violated BVSD policy, CBA, CBC, Paragraph 5D, by failing to provide the public and Ascent Classical Academy Flatirons with pertinent information regarding the agenda item to consider the charter application well in advance of the meeting. The superintendent previously recommended the Board of Education approve the application. Is that the end, or do I have a little more?
That's the end.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Bruce Norcane. And I apologize if the last name.
Actually, that was pretty close. My name is Bruce Norcane. I'm a resident of Boulder all my adult life. I'm a product of public education, and I'm rather passionate on the ability of public education to promote our democracy in our country. So I'm coming here today, I would let, I want to ask you to please reject Ascent's request for release to CSI. And I'd like to take a look at all of the students in Colorado, and as we all know, Colorado schools across the state are dramatically underfunded. Now, we are a rich district, so perhaps it doesn't completely pertain to us, but when 50% of the school districts in the state are on four-day school weeks, we are not in a position where we can fund new and sometimes attractive and possibly innovative school ideas. We need to fund, using the state's funding, all of the schools across the district. In other words, we need to basic, very basic funding for teachers, for keeping buildings open, for transporting students to, safely to and from, school. Excuse me, sorry, I lost my place. So, as I was saying, only the very greatest and the best proposals should really be considered in our state. If we had, if all of the school districts in the state had the funding of Boulder Valley, I could see we could entertain many different innovative ideas. But in this state, outside of Boulder Valley and a few other rich school districts, they are in desperate shape. So, I believe if we wanted to entertain having a school like Ascent, we should have funded it ourselves and not asked the rest of the state to fund it.
Mary Jo Tinlin?
Good evening, I'm Mary Jo Tinlin. I live in Superior. I have three children in Boulder Valley schools. My youngest is here with me tonight. I ask you please to vote tonight to release Ascent to the CSI, as recommended at the State Board of Education hearing on February 14th. The people who are speaking out against Ascent come from a place of fear, I think. They fear competition, they fear Ascent's possible success, they fear the teachers' union, I'm guessing, and they have come to us with conjecture, false flags, and judgment. The parents and loved ones for Ascent come from a place of love, love for our children, for education, for all the kids in the district, and because we want to create people who are good, good in society. So I please, I ask you to please vote to release us to CSI. Give us a chance. If we do it wrong, we're going to get closed. They'll close the school if anything happens. Please vote and to support all people in your district, not just certain people, all people. Don't discriminate against us. Please release us to CSI. Thank you.
Okay, Anna Segura?
Common Sense Media found that 97% of teens' online time is used for passive consumption of entertainment. Without effective controls, screen time guidelines, and transparency, BVSD students will do the same at school, waste their time on non-educational technology distractions that BVSD knowingly and willingly makes available, chats, social media, gaming, advertising, YouTube, and Netflix. As long as these distractions are available in class, students will not be able to realize their full educational potential. In June 2018, Boulder psychologist Tracy Markle and Brett Kennedy wrote the board highlighting how special needs students are the most vulnerable to technology distractions. They urged BVSD to implement a rotation model versus the one-to-web Chromebook model and create special protections for vulnerable students, including ADHD, autism spectrum, learning disabilities, and students suffering from depression and anxiety. They also cited research that 65% of children between the ages of eight and 14 have experienced cyberbullying on social media. None of these recommendations have been implemented. Summit and Casey Middle Schools blocked Google Hangout chats this month because it was a distraction to learning. Please don't make the rest of BVSD schools learn the hard way. Be proactive and please put student safety and education first by blocking access to non-educational distractions, chats, gaming, advertising, and social media. I would also like to request that BVSD deny the Ascent request to release their application to CSI. I provided charts that show Ascent's charter schools enrollment of low-income special needs and students of color is well below district and state averages. Forbes has labeled their practice of using a for-profit management company run by the same people who run their schools as a clear conflict of interest. An underperforming school with conflict of interest that does not serve diverse students should not be entitled to operate with state taxpayer funds in our district. Please vote no to prevent further drain on limited state general fund resources. Thank you.
Beth Paulson?
I'm Beth Paulson, and I'm here again to address you, members of the board, and to ask you to please relinquish ACA F to the CSI. I represent myself, my family, and hundreds of other families who want this school. Also, to be clear, we would like ACA F, we want Ascent, not, we want the Ascent replication model, not something else. These are, it's a proven model. My children have attended Golden View, I know firsthand how great these schools are. It's a proven model of education, which is what the charter school law mandates. Also, I would say that releasing the CSI would allow Boulder Valley to listen to hundreds and hundreds of Boulder Valley families who have begged for this option. It would also allow you to still honor those who don't want the BVSD mill levy override going to students who may be out of district. This is a compromise that could make it a win-win for everyone. Additionally, I have heard the rumors and I have read the social media comments that CSI is not an accountable authorizer, and I think that you know that it is. It's governed by the state, it's monitored, they've closed four schools, one in 2017, one in 2018, two schools were closed, charter schools in 2019. So they are looking, they're watching, they're overseeing. There's probably, I think I heard that there are 50 charter schools in Colorado. So it seems to me that that proves, they are watching, they're monitoring, they're looking, and the ones who aren't doing well, they're being closed. I just want to reiterate how much we and hundreds of other families want this school, and I just ask you, I implore you, to please do the right thing to allow us this choice and allow us this school. Please relinquish us to the CSI. Thank you.
Dawn Reinfeld? Sepita Miller? Excuse me, I forgot Ashley Moses. My apologies.
My name is Ashley Moses, and I am a BVSD mother of six beautiful children. I hope that my name sounds familiar, as my husband and I have sent numerous emails to you regarding ACA F. Because of the lack of response we have received to those emails, I felt it important I'd be here tonight in person to ensure our voice is heard. I am emphatically requesting that you do the right thing for the several hundred BVSD families requesting this school and relinquish ACA F to the Colorado Charter School Institute so that our children can be provided the currently unoffered education curriculum they are in desperate need of this coming fall. I was at the State Board hearing on February 14th and heard Boulder County District State Board Member Angelica Schroeder say that there is a precedent in the state to relinquish a charter to CSI if requested when the district has exclusive chartering authority. You are in this position. Please, please make the right choice and relinquish this school. I know there are many here tonight and in the past who have come to speak with you both for and against this charter. I ask that you take into consideration what the motives are behind each group. I, like many other families here, am requesting this charter because a low-tech classical curriculum is something I know my children will not only benefit from but excel with. There are many motives among those who oppose this school, but ultimately what those motives boil down to is a non-inclusive will to stand in the way of our choice. This is simply unjust, and I believe you know it. Your considerations should be weighed more heavily on the population who want and will attend this school, not with those who have no direct stake in it. I am here tonight as a mother of two of your most underserved populations in BVSD. My children are of Hispanic descent by my husband and are part of the free and reduced lunch population. For years, I've heard how BVSD wants to aid both these underperforming communities thus far with minimal to no success, and I'm here tonight telling you, this school and this curriculum is what my children need and deserve. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Sepita Miller?
Last time we spoke on Ascent, there were some families struggling to get a quality education for their students. Some of their problems were real and complicated, children with dyslexia, concerns about technology. I'm on the District Tech Advisory Committee, and we had a really nuanced conversation on a technology opt-out policy just last week. But I am concerned about Ascent. A friend sent me this article from the Complete Colorado, Page 2. In it, Schuler said that some of Superintendent Anderson's recommendations were poison pills. Schuler thought that requiring board meetings in the district and requiring a local Board of Directors were two of those poison pills. Local accountability- a local Board of Directors were two of those poison pills. Local accountability is fundamental to a school in this district, and Schuler saw them as poison pills. I'm afraid that he's going, that this school is going to be used here in Boulder Valley to ride on the coattails of how well students do in our district. They're going to say, we have a Boulder Valley school, and Boulder Valley is known for its great schools, and they're going to have a record based on somebody else's work and not their own. Thank you.
Okay. Nylem Desai. My apologies on the pronunciation.
No worries. I'd like to release my two minutes to Heidi Gannal. Then I would like to release my two minutes to BJ Jones. When you turn in your minutes, you need to do that before public participation begins. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And maybe, maybe we'll work on making that process a little clearer, that we do that at the beginning when we're signing up. Moving on to non-agenda items, Beth Egan? Is Beth Egan here? Okay. Tina Genie Larter?
Good evening, School Board and Superintendent Dr. Anderson. My name is Tina Genie Larter. I'm here to speak about the later start decision that was made for the high schools. I'm a parent of one Boulder High School student, and I have a son at Casey who's been taking classes at Boulder High for three years. I'm also the president of Boulder Nordic Junior Race Team, you heard from a bunch of us last time. And, so you know, you real, last week, so I know you realize and understand the impact of the decision you've made. So I would just like to make two points tonight. First, I was born and raised in Boulder. I've been very involved in Boulder Valley School District at the school level, and I've been a very active member of the community. So, my opinion is Boulder is a highly educated community, and people are very involved. So it seems the better way to have handled this decision, such a high-impact change to our, to the schools, would have been to have open discussions with the community upfront, laying out all the concerns and issues that we had, maybe discussing the issues and problems, and then figuring out some solutions to these issues before the final decision was made. That was the first point. And the second point is that I would just like to politely remind the board that all the students with after-school activities, they do need a solution to the scheduling problems created by this decision, by this new schedule. So I would like to request the district put forward soon, like now, a timeline for when the district will propose those solutions. That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, Breckin Jones?
As Boulder County natives, BVSD graduates, CU graduates, and proud parents of three children in BVSD, we are here to discuss an ACR discrimination complaint that we filed four months ago. For those of you who are unaware, Dr. Anderson is supposed to be the designated compliance officer for discrimination and harassment complaints. When we made an ACR complaint, Rob never even met with us or spoke to us. His responses indicate that he still has never actually read our complaint. Instead, Dr. Anderson chose to delegate his responsibilities to Robin Fernandez and did not fulfill his duties. We filed our first complaint on November twenty-seventh. Dr. Anderson had over three months to reply to our original November twenty-seventh complaint. He responded to the report ten days late on February twenty-second. The report was horribly incomplete and sloppy, even containing three blank pages. It did not address our primary concerns of the complaint either. Last November, Robin had promised us a point-by-point response, and we are still waiting. We filed an additional ACR complaint on January sixth. Dr. Anderson, as the compliance officer, again had forty-five more school days, several months to reply to our January sixth complaint. That report is due today. Yet, Dr. Anderson informed us this morning that he would not be bothered to issue a reply. Dr. Anderson's willful refusal to address our January sixth ACR complaint demonstrates his hostility against families that are members of a protected group, the very topic of our complaint. We ask the board to take action on our KE appeal submitted to you today, March twelfth, requesting an independent investigator, a board reprimand of Dr. Rob Anderson, and an apology to the families represented in the ACR complaint. Thank you for your time.
BJ Jones?
Hello. Every protected class, regardless of which class, deserves a fair hearing, reasonable consideration, and timely due process. As the compliance officer, Dr. Anderson is supposed to serve a vital role in protecting students from hostility and discrimination. I do agree that the compliance officer may delegate certain duties to an underling, but ultimately, it is Dr. Anderson as the compliance officer who is responsible for a timely response. If an underling is out of town and unable to perform the duties delegated, then Dr. Anderson as the compliance officer must perform those duties. Replying to an ACR complaint is not optional for the compliance officer, nor is the long forty-five school-day deadline extendable under policy. Would it bother you if a compliance officer ignored a report of an elementary principal who violated policy ACE three? Would it disturb you if a compliance officer decided to ignore hostility to students based on their religious beliefs or other protected class designation? Policy protections must be given to all students, regardless of their protected class, and the compliance officer has a duty to give responsible, reasonable consideration to all complaints. We would ask that you, the school board, take action on our KE appeal regarding the actions of the superintendent, and send a strong message that the compliance officer must take all ACR complaints seriously. No families should be treated with hostility based on their protected class characteristics. Thank you.
Seneca Merly?
Hi, thanks for your time. I am here to speak also about the late start implementation. I'm a parent of a sophomore at Boulder High, a fourth grader at Crestview, and also a parent on the Boulder Nordic Junior Racing Team. I understand and concur with the studies about late start times, and I appreciate the work that's been done around that. However, I'm here to urge greater communication regarding its implementation. For example, last Thursday we met with my sophomore son's counselor at Boulder High, and we went over class discussion, class choices, and the general feeling was, well, we'll just hope that he gets last period off. And then she said, about fifty percent of Boulder High probably going to need last period off, and that just doesn't really feel really great at this stage of the game. So, you can see why we're concerned. Some brief ideas, maybe you've heard lots of ideas, and I will be, tomorrow there's supposed to be a meeting with the Boulder High Principal, but I believe that's probably now canceled, given the weather. But, you know, eighth period off, or getting credit or waiver for gym is typically what's been happening, but I think potentially we could look as a, as a school board, to look at making eighth period actually a gym class that we could get credit for, that equates to the actual work that the kids are doing in regards to everything they have to do in order to do the sports or other activities. My actual son said, why not a half an hour lunch? So, just put that out there. And lastly, as Tina said earlier, just the encouragement for openness and a timeline on how this is going to be implemented so that we're not shrugging our shoulders going, well, we just hope it works out. Thanks so much.
And Lenora Reynolds?
Hi, I too am here to talk with you about the late start issue. Thank you so much for your time and listening to that. I have three kids, two who are at Fairview High School, and I have a fifth grader at Bear Creek who is equally impacted by late start because he's concerned about the family time he'll be missing with his older siblings, because as their sports are moved back and their homework is moved back, he won't have the same quality of time with them. So I would ask you, please, as Tina and Seneca have, to give us a timeline for a solution to the late start activity as it impacts after-school, the late start scheduling, as it impacts after-school activities. Nordic, I, two of my kiddos are Nordic skiers, and I am not surprised that we're here in force because it's a life-changing experience for these kids. But I was at the input session at Fairview High School, and only three of the many families who were there were Nordic skiing parents. I also have a swimmer, and it's my understanding from one of the assistant principals at Fairview that Fairview has a five-year contract with the South Boulder Rec Center that can't be changed, and so changing the swim schedule will be at the least difficult and probably impossible, and so that will have a big impact on their ability to swim. I finally want to tell you how deeply disappointing and frankly disrespectful I think the input sessions have been at the high school level. We were treated like kindergarteners with poster board put out on the tables and pencils and pens put out to write down our concerns. The district athletic officer actually said to me and to Beth Egan that she would not care what happens to our athletes because they're not athletes for Fairview High School itself.
Thank you. All right, so that concludes public participation, and our next item is board communication. Would anyone like to start off? Any board members? Okay, Richard, thank you.
I just want to give a shout out to the Parity Group that graduated their group of parents on Saturday. There must have been about twenty-two of them that went through this program and were all very enthused in terms of what they learned and things that they may be able to accomplish as a group. So, just a shout out to that group. And I want to thank everybody that came in and spoke tonight. I know things are difficult, the late start's difficult, and I'm sure that we're going to get a good handle on that. I'm sure that Dr. Anderson has been looking at how to mitigate some of these particular issues, and I'm not sure where you're at with that, but I'm sure we'll get a report on it soon. The, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Shelley? Shelley?
So, I just want to thank everyone for coming. I appreciate everyone's opinions on all of these topics, and I'd like to reiterate what Tina said many times, which is that we read every email that we get, and it's not always possible to respond to all of them, but I want you to know that we do read them and we are considering all viewpoints up here. I want to say that I, I just want to, usually I don't do this because I think it's, could be boring, but I wanted to say that I attended the PEN event on technology at Centennial, and it was absolutely fantastic, and my hat is off to the people who, who put that together. There were several really interesting talks. I would reiterate again, I think it's important for, I didn't see any other board members there, I think it's really important that some of these people be given time to come and speak in front of our board. They're, they're national, sometimes international experts on these topics, and very educational. So, that night there was Tracy Markle and Dr. Brett Kennedy. Tracy talked about brain science and the effects of screen time and screen addiction, and Dr. Kennedy talked about how prevalent pornography is with our kids, with any kids, but I think the statistic was something like forty-three percent of ten-year-olds are actively seeking out pornography and can find it easily on the internet. That was a shocking statistic to me, and I feel like those are the kinds of things that we need to know more about, and we have people that can help us with that. He talked about kids being approached online and how their brains are not developed to the point where they can differentiate what's good and what's not good for them. And, and so that was really interesting. There was also a former DA, Boulder DA, who was there, who talked about, he's now a prosecutor of cybercrimes, and he talked about the amount of sextortion, which is just increasing throughout the country, and also about the risks of kids putting things on the internet that will come back to haunt them, and that forty percent of colleges have now, have said that they have found something about an applicant online that prevented them from accepting them into college. So that, that's really interesting, and I, and also that forty percent of schools, but seventy percent of companies are doing that. So, I think that it's really important for our kids to know that. I know that a lot of parents tell them that, but I feel like if that information was shared in sort of an expert way through the district into the schools, that it may be in some ways taken more seriously than parents even saying this at home, because we say so many things. There is also an school resource officer there who developed a curriculum around guidelines for use of computers to prevent cybercrime. And then, of course, Andrew Moore was there and talked about what the district's doing in terms of classroom management software and the, all the progress we've made as a district towards addressing these issues. But I just can't tell you how, how great it was and how informative these people were, so I really think we should get some of them here to talk to us. So, we're going to be talking about tech issues later and also complaints and Ascent later, so I won't spend too much time on that. As far as late start time, I reiterate what you said, Richard, I know that you're working on that, and I, you know, I'm looking forward to your solution, but it, you know, somebody's comment just made me, reminded me that both my kids were student athletes, and I think my daughter missed thirteen French classes one semester because of softball. So, that, that's not good. So, it would be really nice if, if some accommodations were made for kids that have those sorts of obligations after school, and I, I'm sure we're going to work on something that will be helpful. So, thanks.
Shelley, did they tape that event? Because I saw that ahead of my calendar but couldn't go because of parenting. Did they tape it?
Priority.
Did they tape it, do you know?
They did tape it. Somebody was there taking video, I don't know if it's posted on the PEN website, but somebody-
I'll reach, I'll reach out to PEN.
Yeah.
Because if you could just send the link out, that would be ideal.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know where it is. So, Lori, could you maybe look and see where that is? Thanks. Yeah.
Kathy, are you ready yet?
Thanks, Tina. I just wanted to start my comments with one observation because I've had some emails that had some fairly harsh words in it, and I want to echo what Shelley and Tina said, which is I do read every email, and I do listen, but listening and agreeing aren't the same thing. And just because I may not agree with some of the opinions doesn't mean I'm not listening carefully and paying attention to everything that's said. So I just think that's important to put out there because we do represent a very large district with very diverse opinions, and we're not always going to agree, but that doesn't mean we can't have civil conversations and that we can't listen to each other. Sam and I today went to see High Peaks and BCSIS, and it was just awesome. The, one of the highlights was going into the room and seeing all of the literacy materials, and both principals of very diverse schools and populations talked about how important that literacy adoption was and how much of a change it's making in their students and their, and their ability to teach and how excited their teachers are around that. So, that's actually really exciting to hear and look forward to seeing the growth in our literacy outcomes as a result of that. So, so thanks to Genie and Philip for taking time out of their day and all the teachers. It was just, it was great to see. One of the enactments, which was of course near and dear to my heart, were two classes that were enacting being in the- were two classes that were enacting being in the legislature. And they actually got to, like, they were hearing real bills and wanting to know exactly how the legislature ran, had decided the bills that they were actually hearing. So that was awesome. And then on the late start, I went to the two coffees with the principal at Fairview. And what I heard from the parents was similar to what I'm hearing tonight, which is, and I know you're working on this, the sooner we know, the better. And kind of the consensus, at least, that I heard at Fairview was a 3:45 discharge. Parents didn't seem to have a lot of, they still had angst, but not as much as if it goes to as late as four. And so I'll look forward to hearing what the implementation schedule is on that because I think for, you know, teachers and administrators and families, the sooner we know that, I think, the better. And I don't think I can comment on some of the things that were brought up tonight because I do think some of the information is confidential, at least for the board. So I'm not going to be able to respond to some of that information. But I do appreciate everybody coming forward and sharing their opinions, and I look forward to continuing to collaborate with everybody and going forward. Thank you.
Okay, other board members? Kitty?
I want to thank everybody who came and spoke today and reiterate what Shelley and Kathy said, is I do read all the emails. However, I do not respond to emails that are sent to every single one of us because I believe it would be unwieldy for each recipient to get seven separate responses. I do respond to emails that are sent just to me. But I do listen to them, I do, I mean, I do read them, I do take them into account. And about late start, I completely understand the concerns about ending later. I've not heard one person say they didn't like the beginning later. And I also agree that the staff is going to figure out how to make this work for everybody.
Okay, Sam, Madonna? You good, Donna? Okay. Great, all right, so then we're going to move on to our next item. Board members, everyone doing okay? No one needs a break? Okay, fabulous. Our next item is an information item, 6.1, a CBOC update to the board. We have Rob Price joining us.
In second, I don't know what the password is. Oh, it's right over here. Sorry.
That's okay. And you should, you got it? Minimize all that.
And then where is the? Sorry about this.
Got it.
All right. Good evening, President Marquess, members of the board, and Dr. Anderson. Before I get started, I want to introduce our new executive director of bond planning. So Scott Stevens is joining us this evening. Scott comes from Fountain Ford Carson School District Number Eight, spent about six years there. So he'll be leading the daily elements of the bond program for the next few years. So as of February 21st, we've expended more than $428 million, which makes us 64% complete. We are projecting another $108 million of expenditures by the end of December of this year. We've completed 34 of the 63 projects identified in the master plan with 23,000 students benefiting from those improvements. Nine projects started or are in construction or started construction this month. So teams are starting construction earlier to allow more assurance for smoother re-entry than we had last summer. So as you've noticed, a lot of those projects started in March. Hopefully, you will take the time to get out to Fairview and Nederland and see the improvements. They've really turned out wonderful. Fairview's auditorium opened up this month. Locker, the weight room, also opened up. And then significant improvements up in Nederland Elementary School. Six projects, as shown, are in design. These projects will move into construction this summer. I will just remind everyone, we'll be under construction at the Ed Center starting in June. So we'll communicate to the public as we get closer to that date. And then that leaves us 14 projects remaining in the master plan. So most of these projects will be starting design this month, and we'll roll into construction next spring. Transportation Center, many of you have already seen this, but on January 8th, we started rolling buses out of the new transportation center. This new facility is twice the size of the existing building. We added three additional maintenance bays, provided ample space for major and quick repairs. We've significantly moved storage, or we significantly have more storage, which allows teams to be more efficient and parts more readily available. Regarding energy usage, I know, Sam, this is a question you brought up at a few board meetings. This building is designed to be 57% more energy efficient than a code-compliant building. Central Kitchen, we have begun construction out of Central Kitchen. We're relocating utilities. We'll start demolition here in the next few weeks. When it is completed a year from now, we will be consolidating our three production kitchens throughout the district into one. This is a new 33,000-square-foot facility with a loading dock for fresh food processing area for deliveries from local farms. We have three food prep areas, over 7,000 square foot of storage. We'll have business and classroom training spaces and an onsite cafe. We will also accommodate the No Student Hungry Bag Program that provides food to preschool students on weekends and breaks. This is in partnership with the YMCA and Community Food Share Program. And then future plans, we've roughed in, we will not be providing it right when it opens, is a teaching kitchen, and we'll have to raise some additional funds for that, but that will be a rough-in space for that. And then Coal Elementary School, this has been under construction since spring of last year. This is wrapping up. We turned over the kindergarten program, or the kindergarten addition, in January. We've completed the green screen room and then their innovation center. Now, we still have some work to do after the summer, replacing some windows, and then that'll wrap that up. And then this is another project, we're looking at the playgrounds, making sure that we have ADA accessibility into swings, et cetera. So we'll be looking at that over the next few months. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Clay, our chair, and our co-chair could not make it tonight, so Jeff will be representing CBOC.
It's nice to see you all again. As Rob said, Mike and John couldn't make it, so they called me up from the minors to give you this report for CBOC. The committee has met twice in the last, since the last report to the board in December. At the January meeting, the committee approved staff's recommendation to transfer $4.7 million from program reserve to five project budgets. The additional funds were needed for a variety of reasons, such as changes in code and expanded scope to meet needs that have arisen since the master plan was developed. At the February meeting, the committee approved staff's recommendation to transfer $3 million from bond premium to program reserve, and this fund is used to address unforeseen circumstances and projects. Also, at this meeting, the committee approved staff's request to use $4.3 million of bond premium to install air conditioning in the five schools that will be under construction this summer. And we in the committee support your desire to move forward with installing air conditioning in all schools and appreciates the guidance provided at the February 12th work session. From a financial oversight position, at each meeting, the committee reviews financial reports and staff presents a forecast of projected recommendations for bond premium funds. Outstanding contracted commitments at this time total $56.5 million. Staff is forecasting fiscal year 2019 expenditures to total approximately $125 million. Staff is tracking project performance in terms of variance from the contracted construction bid and shares this information with the committee at each meeting. For the 16 projects that are over 90% complete, staff is projecting $3 million in savings. For the 14 projects that are 100% complete, the average variance is 0.8% under budget, resulting in $1.2 million in savings. So from a committee standpoint, we have a lot of confidence in staff. I think they've done a tremendous job, given the vagaries of the construction market and how much construction, how much is under construction throughout the front range, to have the results that you're having from your staff, I think, is pretty remarkable. So thanks for your time.
Well, I just want to say I agree, I can't, it's just amazing the accuracy that they get with the expenses and how we're still on budget with all of these different projects across 56 different schools is incredible, and we're doing it in such an efficient way and with so much transparency. So I just appreciate both of your work so much. Board members, any comments? Yeah.
How much, Rob, do we think we need for the teaching kitchen to make it fully usable?
Teaching kitchen's right around $500,000 right now.
Is there a plan to go out to the community to fundraise, or what are your plans?
You know, Cheff Anne and I have been discussing that for some time, but we don't have a concrete plan at this point.
Okay, and is this something I should know about, teaching kitchen? Have we talked about? Okay, okay, but this is just new today, right? Okay.
Well, it's been in the design and discussion for quite some time. It'd be a very desirable program for CTE.
Yeah.
But again, some, we've got to purchase equipment, et cetera. It was not in the original master plan, so we're building out the shell. And then in the future, we'll have the shell to put the equipment in.
But is that what the grant was for last time? Wasn't that, that was for the actual equipment that we're going to?
That is equipment within our kitchens.
Okay, within, okay. All right. Kitty?
I have a question about coal, and I see the green room, is that for video production?
It is.
How cool is that? So they have their own green screen?
They do.
I like it.
Any other comments or questions, board members? Okay, well, thank you so much, just appreciate all of your work. All right. So our next item is a legislative update. Rob had sent out a couple of comments about two pieces of legislation that were being discussed, one that were, I think, opposed to and one that were in favor of, is that right? Those were both on the news and notes, yeah?
Yeah, we sent those out this week.
Yeah, okay. So board members, any questions or comments on those or any other? I'd also asked about the bill about the working group for dyslexia. I didn't know if there was an opinion from staff on that.
Well, I would say that we're in support of a working group to be established around this issue. As I think about our community and as I've gone throughout and been in all the schools and throughout the community, we have a community that's very in tune to these issues. And some of those folks in our community are leading efforts across the state. I think it makes sense for a working group to come together to start to think about the complexities of some of the issues that they bring up and bring forward recommendations as that group convenes. And so it's something that I'm in support of. I'm looking forward to seeing how this legislation moves forward.
Any other questions or comments about legislation? Kathy?
I just think it's going to be really important after March 15th when they get the revenue forecast, I think we're going to start to see a lot of things start to open up then, including the proposal for full-day kindergarten and whether we're going to have an increase in the negative factor and what our funding's going to look like. So I think it's a little quiet right now, but it's certainly the quiet before the storm. So I think we'll have a lot to report at the next board meeting.
All right, if everyone's okay, I'm going to move on to action items. Okay? All right. 7.1 Personnel Item, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, February 19, 2019, Special Meeting. 7.3 Approval of Minutes, February 26, 2019, Regular Meeting. 7.4 Approval of Minutes, March 5, 2019, Special Meeting. 7.5 Approval of Minutes, March 6, 2019, Special Meeting. 7.6 Acceptance of Donation, Boulder High School. 7.7 Acceptance of Donation, Eldorado K-8. 7.8 Cancellation of March 26, 2019, Board Meeting. 7.9 Construction Agreement to Renovate the Boulder High School Tennis Courts and Track and the Fairview High School Track. 7.10 Delegation of Authority to Superintendent to Negotiate and Sign Lease for Community Schools. 7.11 Reduction in Force Timeline. 7.12 Town of Erie and Boulder Valley School District Joint Use Agreement. 7.13 Grant Health Services, School Health Professionals, Colorado Department of Education 19. 7.14 Grant Netherlands Elementary, Middleland High Schools, Colorado School Counselor Corps, Colorado Department of Education 19. So board members, are there any items that you would like to pull? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion to approve these items?
So moved by Kitty and seconded by Sam?
All right, any discussion or questions? Kathy?
I was wondering, Rob, if you could talk about 7.11, the reduction in force? Give a little more context to that, please?
Sure, I'll have my grados, our assistant soup for human resources, come up and speak to that.
So part of this is probably a meaning on reduction in force. It really shouldn't be called that, so I apologize. It's really the reduction in probationary staff and limited-term teachers. So we have about 89 limited-term that will non-renew because they are, these are teachers who have taken the place if someone's on leave. And then we have about 379 probationary teachers in. We will know within the next week how many we will non-renew. So a reduction in force would go in deeper to non-probationary teachers. So I hope that clears that up. So it's the wrong language we're using, so we'll get that corrected.
I just was thinking, if people read that didn't have context, it might be a little concerning.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks, good question, Kathy. Any other questions or comments about action items? Okay, great, Laura, would you like to call the role?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Jeff Hart. Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, then I'd like to move on to number eight action items. Board members, everyone good? Okay, so we're going to take a five-minute break. Okay, we're back, ready to move forward. So we have two action items tonight. And the first action item is 8.2, Consideration of and Possible Action on Ascent Charter School Academy's February 25, 2019 Request to Operate in Boulder Valley School District by Applying for Charter Through the Charter School Institute. Rob, do you want to set us up for this?
Yes, thank you. We're going to have Kristen Edgar, who's here from Kaplan and Ernest, to kind of set the stage for this conversation for the board around this topic.
Good evening, President Marquess and Directors of the Board of Education of Boulder Valley School District. Thanks for having me. Thought it would be helpful to provide some legal background for this particular request, both for your benefit and the benefit of the listening public, just to have an understanding of what the request is about and a framework for the board to discuss. So Ascent Charter School Academy Flatirons, which was not authorized for a charter in this school district, and that decision was recently affirmed by the State Board of Education. So they are not an authorized charter school yet. They have applied, they've sent a letter to the board requesting permission to become an institute charter school. To give some background, Boulder Valley School District and you as a board have exclusive chartering authority under state law. And what that means is that you as a board are the sole decision-maker with regard to whether or not a charter school opens and operates in Boulder Valley School District. Now, that means any charter school that wants to come and operate within Boulder Valley's boundaries must apply to you for a charter in accordance with district policy and state law. And then you get to make a decision as to whether they will operate here. The request from Ascent, this is not actually, there's no formal statutory process or mechanism for a charter applicant to seek permission to become a charter school institute school. There is a provision in the Institute Charter Schools Act that provides that boards with exclusive chartering authority may permit institute charter schools to establish within their boundaries by passing a resolution to that effect and sending that resolution to the state board. So that is the basis, that provision, that's the basis for Ascent's request tonight. And to be clear about what the board's options are, the board can decline to permit Ascent to establish a charter with Institute Charter School within the district's boundaries. The board could decide to approve or permit Ascent to establish a charter school that's an institute charter school within district's boundaries. If it does that, what that will mean is that the board will need to, at some juncture, adopt a written resolution to that effect. So that likely won't happen this evening because there will want to be some time and planning that has gone into it. So if the board decided it wanted to go that way, it would probably need to direct staff and perhaps our office or internal legal counsel to assist with that and bring action back to the board in the future. Regardless of what the board's decision, if the board's decision tonight is to not permit Ascent to become an institute charter school within district's boundaries... to become an institute charter school within district's boundaries, that is where this conversation will end. There is not an appeal, there is not a right of a charter school to go to the institute and operate within a school district that has exclusive chartering authority. So that's the background that I wanted to provide for your discussion, and I'm happy to field any questions from you if you have them.
Okay, thank you very much for that overview and for clarifying that. I think it is really helpful because a lot of us are new to the process with the Charter School Institute, and it isn't until you come up with this situation that you really need to understand it. I mean, I think the board members understand it, but it's a unique situation that we're in. Okay, board members? Sam?
Kristin, if we do not pass a resolution allowing Ascent to go to CSI, can they come back and apply to us again?
Yes, they could. Within your standard timeframes, I believe your policy permits applicants to apply more than one year to become an authorized charter school of the district.
Okay. Any, Kathy?
I have a motion when we're ready.
You can make a motion?
Can I make a motion? All right, I move that we decline to allow ACIF to establish a charter school within the borders of Boulder Valley School District.
Okay, do we have a second? By Kitty, all right, let's have some discussion. Any, Kitty?
I don't think there's much to say that hasn't already been said about this, except one thing is that Angelica Schroeder's name has been brought up a number of times, and I spoke with her on Saturday. And she encourages anybody who would like to reach out to her to do so because she has changed her mind on what she would recommend. The State Board does not get all the information there is, so there's a lot of information that was not available to them.
Okay, other comments, Donna?
Well, it bothers me to hear that statement because I believe if Angelica Schroeder felt that way, she should have emailed all of us. We don't all have this information. I feel there's a lot of unfounded allegations and fears around this. Boulder Valley has excellent schools. I sent my boys here, all three of them, K through 12. And I asked them last week, did I make the right decision? They said, yeah, Mom, you did. If we're basing our fear that droves of our kids and parents are going to leave because of this school, then we're doing something wrong. We're doing something right, but I believe when I got on this board, people have a choice. And I represent a lot of families that want that choice. And I just cannot agree with just eliminating them and saying, no, they're a proven model. They've done a good thing. They don't discriminate. They do not teach religion. There's just been a lot of unfounded allegations, and I, for one, can't go along with Kathy on this.
Okay, any other comments right now? Shelley?
Yeah, I think we've all given this a lot of thought, and I just want to say that I feel like everyone on this board wants to do the right thing for the students in this district. And I think whenever there's a disagreement about things, it usually comes down to what values we place importance on when we're making these decisions. And I think that some people on this board really value fiscal responsibility, and they feel like it's best to keep the funding associated with those students in the district to support the whole system. I think some people here value equity and inclusivity and really believe that Ascent doesn't represent BVSD's values. I think some people value fairness and don't feel like Ascent's been treated fairly. I think some people value parent engagement and don't feel like Ascent is going to allow parents enough say from a board perspective. I think some people value choice and worry that we're not listening to the voices of the parents who want to go to this school very badly. And I think all of those are legitimate values. But for me, I would say of all of those, the main thing driving my thinking around this is fairness and choice. And I think I would reiterate what Donna said to some extent, that from a fairness perspective, I don't think the community has treated Ascent fairly in this process. There's just simply no evidence that most of this fear-based information that, or, you know, disinformation that out there is true. I just don't believe that. It's not my experience, having visited there, talking to the parents, talking to the board members. I just don't think it's fair to paint them with that brush. There's also a feeling somehow that this school isn't representative of BVSD values. But we're a big district, and not everyone feels the same way about everything in this district. And that's okay as long as everyone's following policy and state laws. And I don't think it's fair to dismiss people just because their views might be different than this board's or mine or anything. That's not inclusive, and it doesn't foster the diversity that we say we stand for. So it's also true, and this is to the fairness issue as well, that we have allowed other charters in this district to open. And those charters are meeting the needs of a distinct group of students quite well. And I'm not sure it's fair to prevent one school from opening when we've allowed other schools to open and to make that decision based on the finer points that we've been discussing. I think in principle, we have a precedent for this. I think we should also consider the fact that Ascent has a significant grant that they can use this year if they open. I don't think it's available to them next year, or maybe they'd have to reapply for, I'm not really sure. So I think that that, you know, is something to think about. Which, you know, that brings me to my other value here, which is one of choice. And if what we're hearing is true, and there are literally hundreds of parents who want this for their children, and by not releasing to CSI, we're denying them that choice. And of course CSI can, Ascent can apply again next year, and they have stated that they will. But I feel like, you know, a lot of parents have been waiting for this a long time. And if we don't release them, you know, their children wait another year, and we all know how fast kids grow up and how important every year is to parents and to children. So the bottom line is I don't really see a lot of point in denying them this year and then going through this whole process again next year. I think it's an inefficient use of district resources. And that's why I was in agreement with staff's first recommendation that we approve with conditions, so we could attempt to make progress on all the concerns that we have. Because I do think, you know, there were some legitimate concerns. So if it became clear in those conversations that Ascent was going to be intransigent and not cooperate, we could have had clear grounds to deny this year and every other future year. But right now, I simply just don't feel like there's enough evidence of their unwillingness to cooperate or to try and, you know, come to grips with some of the things that are really important for us in the district. So I, you know, I think we should release them to CSI for all those reasons.
Okay, so I'll chime in here. And I really appreciate your addressing all of our different values as we approach the board table and we take, you know, decisions like this really seriously. And one of my values is local government and locally-elected government. It's incredibly important to me that our taxpayer dollars, both our base funding and our mill levy override and even money that might be collected through the CSI Mill Levy Equalization Fund, which Boulder Valley School District would in fact pay for, for a school that is authorized through CSI, have locally-elected representation. And it's difficult for me that the Ascent Board is not elected. It's a self-replicating board that's predominantly people who don't live in Boulder Valley School District. And I've struggled with that, and I feel like there was some recognition of that, both in an article written by the Hillsdale Collegian as well as a letter we recently got from Derek Schuler. I think by allowing them to apply again, they could address this issue in a way that's a little more affirmative than what I have now. The, so that's one of my biggest concerns about the values. I also think that we had a lot of concerns in January that we addressed. And the exact same concerns were brought up by the Jefferson County District Accountability Committee five years ago, four years ago. They were brought up by the Douglas County District Accountability Committee three years ago. And then Adams 12 had all the same issues, brought them up and denied the application. St. Vrain, Adams 12, and BVSD have all previously denied a request to go to CSI. And Douglas County just denied a request to go to CSI, and they're operating in their district. There is something here that needs to be addressed, and I hope it's addressed the next time that the school applies.
And I too, thank you, Shelley, for identifying the various values. I think all of us hold some of, most of those. It's not like a silo and we each occupy just one space on those. And I just want to say, I do believe that Ascent has been treated fairly. We have complied with our own policies. We've complied with the statutes that we're required to comply with. And I know personally, I can't tell you how many hours I've spent going through this and thinking about it and talking to people and visiting the school. So I don't know that it was a question of fairness. To me, it's a question of what's in the best interest of every student, not just a few hundred families. And so that's why I made my motion, because this isn't a decision that doesn't have any impact on the district. It clearly has an impact on the district. And as far as what Dr. Schroder said, what is clear is that she didn't make a recommendation, and the State Board did not make a recommendation. That's what we know. And some people have taken her comment, I wasn't there, but I watched it, as a recommendation. So I just think it's not fair to pin anything really on what she said or didn't say as an off-ended comment at the end of a board meeting. Because it was not a State Board of Education recommendation. So I just want to echo that I think we've done what we needed to do. I share Tina's concerns that four different DACs have denied this for all, for similar reasons. Nothing has changed really since those DACs have denied it. And when our DAC looked at it, and we had to follow our process, and I see nothing since then that has changed my mind. So that's why I made the motion. Thank you.
Any other comments before we call this to a vote? Okay.
No, I just want to be on the record as saying that I did not and do not believe some of the things that are being said in the community about discrimination against LGBTQ students or about teaching Christianity. I know there's a lot of that going on. I'm not privy to those Facebook or whatever social media groups they are. I don't believe anybody on the board thinks that, but I don't know. I have never heard anyone express to me that they believe those things. So I just want everyone to know that my decision has nothing to do with that.
Okay, is everyone ready to go to a vote on this? Okay, great. Laura, could you repeat the motion?
The motion is to move to decline Ascent Classical Academy to establish a charter school within the boundaries of the Boulder Valley School District.
Want to call the vote?
Benford. I'm sorry. Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhart?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and I know this is disappointing for a lot of parents. This has been a really long, difficult ordeal. And I hope that we can come to a resolution to find options for all of our kids. Okay, so our next item is... So my computer just stopped, so hold on one sec. Just hang on. Okay, 8.3, Consideration of Request to Accept Matter for Review Pursuant to District Policy KER. And do you want to set up this too, Kristin? Okay, thanks.
Certainly. So District Policy KER provides, KE and KER, provides for a progressive complaint process for members of the public who have concerns or complaints about something happening in the district. In the complaint, the way the policy works is the complainant is encouraged to first take the complaint to the first level, that is, the person against whom they have the complaint, see if it can be resolved there. And then the policy contemplates that that will be elevated if the complainant is dissatisfied by the response to the various levels of organizational hierarchy until there's an appeal to the board. So in this instance, this was a complaint by a member of the public against Dr. Anderson. And so the complaint was submitted to him first in accordance with District Policy KE and KER. The complainant was dissatisfied with her response, and therefore she has appealed to the board. Now, under the policy, the board has the discretion to accept or reject the complaint for review. So tonight, the action before the board is whether to accept or reject the complaint for further review. If the board decides to reject the complaint for further review, then the decision of the superintendent is final. If the board decides to accept the complaint for review, then at a future meeting, there will be an appeal at which the complainant can come and present to the board, and Dr. Anderson can respond, and then the board can make a decision at that time.
Okay, so...
I'm ready to make a motion, but if there's questions or comments first, that's fine.
Yep, Kitty?
So if we decide not to review this, is there any reasoning that we provide? Or, I mean, or do we just decide not to? I mean, if we decide to, I would assume we don't need to supply reasoning because we're taking it the next step.
I believe it would be an affirmation of the response that Rob gave to the complainant, that you're satisfied with that response, and that is the reasoning. Is that correct?
That's correct, and there is no requirement that there be a reason. It's still within the board's discretion to accept it or reject it.
Any other questions, clarifying questions? Okay. Kathy?
I move that the board deny the request to accept the matter for review pursuant to District Policy KE-R. And I know we don't need a reason, but I think that the board did comply with, I think Dr. Anderson did comply with the policy. I think the reasons are stated fully in the explanation, and I don't really have anything to add. But I strongly affirm that that was the appropriate action that was taken and that we complied with all important, all of the policies that were alleged to have been violated.
Any second, board members? Kitty, okay? So discussion or questions? Again, our role tonight is not to solve the issue, but to whether to take the issue for review. So, any questions, Shelley, Donna?
I see that part of our policy was followed. We put out an agenda. We put it out. It didn't change. Where I didn't see addressed specifically, and when I went back and reviewed the video from the meeting, I specifically said that I was surprised, and it did hit me by surprise. I was walking into a meeting at 5:00, which I couldn't concentrate on because 10 minutes before that, I saw the resolutions come through. And I didn't have time to read the eight pages, even though they were read to us. I believe our board policies are important and that the Board of Education should set the example by following policy to the nth degree. We're about to discuss policy tonight. And that's why I want to look at policy and make sure the wording is correct. I don't want things in our policy like, we will explore something. I want, yes, we're going to do it, or no, we're not. Policy is how the board holds our staff accountable, and policy is how our community holds the Board of Education accountable. I just think that that 72 hours wasn't addressed, and that's what I brought up at the meeting. And I just needed to point that out because I think there's a little bit of, both people are right. Rob responded correctly, but Heidi has a point in the 72 hours.
Okay. Richard, do you have something?
No.
Okay. Anyone else want to make a comment or can we vote? Want to make a comment? Okay.
So for me to vote one way or another on this, it really is important for me to go through and see what the complainant is saying and then to look at the responses. So I just want to review what I believe is the case here, based on all this information. And so the first aspect of the complaint has to do with this paragraph 1F from Policy A, CBC. And basically, the complainant says the superintendent didn't inform the board on important matters in making this Ascent decision. And the superintendent's saying he did. So I think on this particular issue, this 1F... saying he did. So I think on this particular issue, this 1F paragraph, that there's really some confusion about what the board knew when, especially as it relates to answers to one board member's questions. So the superintendent claims that he did send a sense response to board members when we asked him questions. And as far as I'm concerned, he's absolutely correct. I did receive those emails with a sense responses to our questions. So I believe that all that confusion came from when Kathy said at the board meeting that she did not receive them. And I'm not sure why she may not have received them, but I believe that that is now a point of contention between the two parties. And the fact is that those emails were sent to all board members by the staff.
Can I interrupt for just one second with a quick question for Kristin? So Kristin, the way I read the complaint, K E, is that the only part that is being addressed to the board is the part on B E D A. Is that correct, or no?
Isn't addressed?
I think that the complaint to us that was elevated just is, is just citing the violation of policy B E D A. That's my understanding of the complaint that came to the board, not to the original complaint. Is that, is that correct?
That is the copy of the complaint that I have. It's specific to B E D A.
And that's the one that came to the board? So the, and I, this is more of a procedural question, Shelley.
Okay, that's fine.
You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely fine, because that's where I was going next.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, is that the only other point?
Pretty much, yeah.
Then I think we're good.
Yeah, yeah. So with response to, or in relationship to B E D A, I think that the staff did post what was happening on the agenda in advance. So I don't think that that is a legitimate complaint. I do think that we didn't get the meeting materials in time for us to properly consider those. So I do think that there, there is a point to be made there. So, you know, I do feel like not making, putting out that resolution 72 hours in advance, I think that that happened, but I think it was the natural result of staff changing its mind kind of on short notice. And I do think that people can change their mind on short notice. So for a number of reasons, and that that's not always the wrong thing to do. So it would have been better, I think, from a process perspective, if we had postponed the discussion that night and reviewed the resolution carefully, given us more time to do that, and again, given us time to ask questions. And if the next scheduled meeting was too far off for one reason or another, we could have scheduled a special meeting for that purpose, and we didn't do that. So I'm not sure if that option was considered by anyone, but I believe it should have been. And I also believe that had more, if more board members had input into the agenda setting process, which is prescribed in policy. And the reason it is, is because more heads are better than one on these, on these decisions. And I feel like if more people had been in the room, the, the idea of a special session to discuss this when people had time to review the resolution may have emerged, and that we wouldn't be sitting here talking about this right now. So regarding the complaint and whether to accept it or deny it, I feel like what I'd like to do, I'm not sure that the policy lapse of not getting us that resolution 72 hours in advance justifies making everything null and void that we decided. But I do believe that we need to respect policy. Policy is what holds staff accountable. It's what holds the board accountable. And I feel like in this case, we did miss on giving information to the board and enough time for them to fully consider it. So I would like to offer an amendment to the motion. Okay. And what I'd like to offer is that we say that policy is important, and it's the way that we hold both board and staff accountable. And as such, the board and staff will adhere to all policies going forward.
You're appending that just to Kathy's motion?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, and, okay.
It's as a reminder.
It's right. This is more of a cautionary tale.
Yes.
Gotcha. Let me think about that for a second. Any other comments about Shelley's amendment? Okay. All right. Well, shall we call to a vote?
Could I get the wording again?
Can I get the first part of it again?
Oh, wait. Oh, we need a second for Shelley's amendment. I'm sorry. Thank you, Donna.
Shelley, can you read it again? Okay, I have part of Shelley's, and I have part of Kathy's. So I'm going to have to ask for a reiteration of both of them. For Shelley, I have, "Policy is important, and it's how we hold board and staff accountable." And I didn't get the end of that.
And as such, board and staff will adhere to all policies going forward.
And just a clarification, that's our expectation today.
It is.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Just want to, okay. I think that's what happened to me, too.
Well, I'm pointing out that in this case, we did not get materials far enough in advance, and we are not following our agenda setting policy.
But I do, and we do need to talk about agenda setting. That's a separate conversation, but I can't agree with you more. So...
Okay, so I'm going to reiterate Shelley's. "Policy is important, and it's how we hold board and staff accountable, and as such, board and staff shall adhere to all policy going forward."
Okay. Kathy?
Just seems like it negates the motion, because somehow there's an implied, an implicit statement in there that going forward, we're going to, but up until this point, we never did. And I don't know that I can agree to that. I'm just, that's what I'm, those, I mean, I don't agree with your statement. I took the same oath everybody else did.
Well, that's, I'm not talking about whether we took the oath or not. We did. I'm talking about whether we're following policy, and we're not always.
No, I know. And your comment that we're going to adhere to all policy going forward is just, that to me means like, up to this point, we haven't, and then we're all of a sudden going to change the way we do and start complying with policy. It's just, I may be reading too much into it, Shelley. That's why I'm asking.
So do you want to put a period after all policies and not put going forward?
That might help.
That's fine with me.
Can we take off? Can, can we not do that as amendment? Can we just cut it off? We don't have to make this second amendment.
I'm fine with that.
Great.
Because I thought we were talking about just this, just this case, not everything we've done in the past that we haven't followed policy.
We're talking about this case right now. So we took off going forward, Kitty?
Now, I have just a question. So it's my understanding, and tell me if I'm wrong, that we were required to vote on January 22nd?
Yeah, that's, that was certainly an issue. It was very difficult to create another meeting.
So then, does that mean there would have been no way to postpone it? So then, my question is, so how does policy handle something like, you know, Dr. Anderson changing his mind?
And that might be a good discussion for us, because it's very difficult when you're at a last minute. It's not dissimilar to when we get to the budget. So we have to approve our budget by the last meeting in June, and it can get a little squirrely. So, you know, the, and it doesn't, not every idea is on the table 72 hours before by board members or staff members, particularly board members. So we wish we should, you know, and to Shelley's point, we don't want to have everything decided all the time 72 hours. We have, we need flexibility. So that might be a good board discussion. I don't know if we need to do it tonight. Rob and I have talked a little bit about the, some difficulties we're having with agenda setting right now. So we might be able to roll it into that conversation if everyone feels like that's a good topic for the board. So... Okay. So we have your motion, which is Kathy's motions plus Shelley minus going forward. How are you feeling about that, Kathy?
Sure, can we? Can you just read it without the going forward language? I think it says, I tried to make notes, "Policy is important, and it's how we hold staff and the board accountable, and board and staff will adhere to all policy."
Yeah, Laura has it right better. But what I need is the first part of it, too, attached to the second part of it. I think we all need to hear that before we vote.
Okay. And Kathy's part of it says, "Move that the board deny the request to review the complaint." And then I didn't have the rest.
No, I think I just moved that the board not consider the request. I was reading it off the agenda. The board not consider, or the board deny the request to accept the matter for review pursuant to district policy K E dash R.
Okay. Move that the board...
Deny the request.
Deny the request.
To accept the matter for review pursuant to district policy K E dash R. So I'm just, like I said, reading it off the agenda.
Okay. 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 Move that the board deny the request to accept the matter for review pursuant to district policy K E dash R. "Policy is important, and it's how we hold board and staff accountable, and as such, board and staff shall adhere to all policies."
Okay.
I think after Kathy's, if it said comma, however, the board affirms, to link those things together. Though, that, the way you just read it, it sounds a little disjointed, so.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean? Like a comma, however, the board affirms that.
Instead of and as such?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, is everyone, does Laura need to read it again, or do we have the gist of it?
I'll read it, so we're all clear.
Okay, go ahead.
Move that the board deny the request to accept the matter for review pursuant to district policy K E dash R. "Policy is important, and it's how we hold board and staff accountable. However, the board affirms, staff and board shall adhere to all policies."
I think you can strike the however. You can...
That wasn't meant to be at the end. It was in the middle. Just strike it.
Or it was just supposed to go after the policy K E dash R.
Can we just take however?
Yes.
So the board affirms policy is important?
Yes. Yes, that's fine, Laura.
Okay.
That's good.
All right, Laura, could you call the vote?
Sure.
Is everyone okay with that? Yeah, okay.
Okay. Benford?
Yes.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right.
Then don't we need to make a, approve the motion as amended?
Yes, so under Roberts' rules, parliamentary procedure is to make a motion. The motion that was on the floor was to, for the amendment. That just passed. And so the, then there needs to be a roll call on the original motion, which was Director Gebhardt's part. And so once that, if that passes, then the whole motion with the amendment will be in place.
Thank you. Okay. Do you want to call the roll again?
Question. So if you don't agree with the amendment, I mean, with the original motion without the amendment, how would you vote?
You could vote no on that. And if there is a majority that votes no on that, then it won't pass, and we, we won't have any motion.
Then nothing passes, correct?
Correct, yeah.
The amendment passed.
The amendment passed, so that language is in there. But then now we have to go back and vote on the original motion as amended by the amendment.
Oh, okay. So we're voting yes again on the amended motion?
If you wish to. If you wish to.
Yes.
Okay, I'm still confused.
Sure.
Realizing that, realizing that Ms. Knoll had a point on the 72 hour thing, that amendment, that's what we just voted on?
No. So we voted on Shelley's amendment to add to Kathy's amendment. Now we're voting on them together.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. That was much better than I could have explained.
I'm catching on. Laura, would you like to call the roll?
Benford?
Yes.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I think we have great news. I think we can talk about JS tonight. Is everyone okay with it? It's 5 to 8. And we've kicked it down for a long time. So I'd like to do some policy study, 9.1, Study of Board Policy, JS, Student Use of District Technology, the Internet and Electronic Communication. And board members, are you okay just taking these individually? So we'll start with 9 dot 1. And again, the goal today is to provide feedback to Rob, so that we can then take these back for action. And it may be that we need another study session. That's fine. But today is study. It is not action, okay? All right. Anyone want to start? Sam, you have a question?
How do we know when we provide individual input to these policies that it's, a majority of the board is in favor of that, or is this not the time to indicate that to the superintendent?
You know, I think what we did last time, and this is new, I think, for us, is that we're providing feedback in a more open way for staff to react to in the policy. And I think that we'll see, and I, I think that we do probably have to answer that question if we get to, I don't think I've heard feedback yet that we weren't in a majority on, or at least all open to hearing how that would be reflected in a policy. But it may be that we'll have that conversation tonight. It's a really good point. So, and that's, you know, if you hear something that you don't like, you might want to speak up.
Or if you do like.
Or if you do like. It would be even better. All right. So the first technology is the Student Use of District Technology, the Internet and Electronic Communications. So anyone like to start with a comment, or an issue that they still are looking to get resolved? Donna?
Just, I've had these notes on here forever, and coming back and forth to them. But I saw this Dr. Jennifer King, and she talks about, makes a really good point, that ads are collecting consumers, and they're pushing stereotypes. And I really have a problem on the first page of this five-page document, or JS, on way down near the bottom where it says, "Because online advertising," and then goes on. Parents, let me just highlight that part that says, "And explore strategic options for limiting exposure to advertising." I don't like "and explore." I just want to stop the advertising. And I think that there's a way in this world of technology that we can do that. I may have more to say later, but that, that really stands out to me on the first page.
Okay, Kathy?
I have a question on that. I thought we were going to do a pilot, where we blocked the advertising and see if it really did interfere with the educational access, but maybe my memory is mistaken on that? I know it doesn't address Donna's concern specifically, but I, I share the concern about advertising, and I thought that was something we were exploring, but maybe I'm wrong.
To recall from our last discussion around this, there were really two, two things that we felt like we needed to have ongoing discussions on. That's the ad blocking, and then this idea of screen time. And I think that you all have heard from that, heard from the community. I appreciate the, the commitment from our community, continue to stay engaged on this. It's, it's really been, it's really forced us to really, to hone in and get better. So, so yes, the intent is, I, I think when you think about ad blocking, the technological challenge, and this isn't something I don't think we can overcome, is what's the right solution for the machines that we have that don't slow the machines down to a place where they become frustrating for kids, right? And so I think that that's, so to speak to your pilot, that's where we were headed, a plan for a pilot, you know, potentially later this spring, or going into this fall. So I, you know, I guess the wording, so I'm hearing this correctly, Donna, what you're saying is, "Explore" isn't a strong enough commitment for you to be comfortable? That you'd want some stronger language around that, and then maybe a board discussion around, you know, what's, with the understanding, with the intent of trying to, to roll out solutions. But it just, you know, depending upon the solution we have to implement, we have to pilot.
And I would want a commitment for how soon we would do that. Fall seems too far away to me. It seems like we could be doing that this spring, and then when fall hits, maybe we could have an answer to that. Maybe I don't understand what complicated it is, too.
I'd want to get back with staff. I'd want to make sure we have a reasonable timeline. You know, we do have a lot of things happening. We have GoGuardian that we're rolling out. We have lots and lots of work happening within the district. But I think it's reasonable to ask for a timeframe and try to do the best that we can to expedite this as an effort.
Excellent. Can I just, did everyone read the response to my RFI that came out? Okay.
What?
The RFI that I had requested that Laura sent out. Okay, just, because I wanted to say that he... Okay, just, because I, I wanted to say that he addressed advertising and that it's not appearing in G Suite. So I don't know to what extent we're using G Suite, which would be my follow-up conversa, question is, are we mostly in G Suite which doesn't have advertising? Or, just in terms of, I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, how much of the screen time that the kids have is in a protected environment already? And how much does, needs to be addressed on top of that?
I mean, we, we can pull averages, district averages, but I would say that, you know, the, the bar in, in, in the conversations I've had with parents, the bar is, you know, if you're exposed to something. Right? Whether, you know, you can be in G Suite 90% of the time, if you're not, 10% of the time, and then your kid is exposed to something, exposed to ads. I mean, I think, I, I think that's what we're really trying to think about. We can certainly share with you. I would imagine that most of our kids' time in, on Chromebooks is in G Suite. You know, working through those applications. But when they're, when, when they're exposed to ads, they're exposed to ads. And I think that's the problem we're trying to solve for.
Okay, and I just wanted to appreciate, just recognize your response to my question about Google Chat and Hangouts. And I was happy to hear that there are ways to take those offline if it's not useful in adding to the academic experience of the Chromebook. And then, yes.
I just wanted to say I agree with Donna on the putting explore in policy. And I understand that right now we don't know exactly how it's going to work. And I don't have a solution for this problem, unfortunately. But I do think policy should, should have stronger language than explore. So, sorry to have a, a criticism or agree with a criticism without coming up with a solution.
But the, the purpose of these conversations is to get this right. And so certainly, that's, that's why we're having this conversation, so, so I appreciate your feedback.
And then I have a, oh.
Chime in, because I agree with Donna and Kitty and I would look for a word like implement. That would satisfy me. Implement strategic options for limiting exposure. And we don't know what those options will be yet and we're going to vet the options and see what makes the most sense in balancing the different considerations. But school is one of the few places where our kids should be relatively ad-free or as ad-free as we can make it. You know, they're bombarded everywhere. So I, I just feel like the stronger the language, the better. And I think some word like implement doesn't, you know, tie our hands to doing something we can't really do. But it says, we're going to do something and we're going to work as hard as we can to limit our kids' exposure to ads in school and in the tools that the school provides them.
I just want to be careful, you know, given our last discussion we just had, that when we put something in policy, that we can deliver. Right? So, so that's, I, I think that, that in working with staff and certainly understand implement. And so, so we'll, we'll consider stronger language with explore. We'll, we'll consider the, the challenges around this and how fast we can do this. But, but certainly agree with your sentiments on this.
Yeah, I think we need to deliver. And I'm not, I have no idea what we're delivering, but just, we need to, we need to say something stronger than we're just going to look at it, which is kind of what explore implies to me. I get why it's there and I'm not trying to, you know, criticize the, the original draft here, but I just would like it to be stronger and send a message that we are going to do something.
Okay, thank you.
And somehow, just the goal for the parents to understand, it's not about exploring, it's about getting rid of this. That's all.
And I had a general comment about this policy and I, and it's not something I feel really strongly about, but I just wanted to raise it as something to consider. I think there's sometimes an idea that if a child misuses technology or, or that if they do something else, that it might be taken away as a punitive measure. And I was thinking about, we're trying to focus on technology as part of an academic experience and we would never punish a child by taking away a textbook. So my thought would be that taking away technology and access won't be used as a punishment for any kind of, in, any situation in the school if it's considered an academic necessity. And, and, but I'm not saying that it should never be taken away, I don't, but it's just sort of this, this thought I had in my, you know, just, just a consideration. I don't know.
And, and to your point, Tina, I think one of our community members wrote an email talking about, if we're going to put taking away in there or if we're going to use that, what does that actually mean? And how do we protect that person's device? And so, so the, the, I just vaguely remember the email. I'd have to go because I have them in different folders. But I think we have to look at, if it's going to be taken away, what that looks like. One other thing I just want to point out, we, we may get to it, there's a lot of things I'd like to see blocked. But there's a sentence in there that says, all material and information access received through district technology resources remains the property of the district. I'm wondering how we're going to handle personal identification information? For example, if somebody writes an email to another person and said, hey, let's go to Joe's house at such and such and guess what, I know his social security number and here it is and here's, and they're putting out a bunch of information. How are we going to protect that would be a question to staff.
Okay, and that might be under JRCB, the next one.
Well, it's right here under JS.
Okay. Okay.
Where's that, Donna? I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow along.
No expectation of.
What page?
Whoops, excuse me.
No expectation of privacy.
Page two of five at the top. I just, I just want it clarified that all material information access received through district technology resources remains the property of the district. There, there's some information there that, that might be very important to not release or let out or have.
Okay, other comments on JS?
Just comment on Donna's comment. I, I, some districts are going to, that information is the property of the student, not the district. The student and the parents, if the student is underaged. So I think it would be good for the district to look into what other districts are, what, what language they're using in that regard.
Shelley, do you have any recommendations on that or is that just kind of?
Let me, let me find the district that I'm thinking about.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask Shelley, did they mention any of this at the meeting that you attended?
It wasn't really so much about data privacy. I mean, the language you just quoted is, is often standard language in these policies. And it's really more about if a kid is doing something criminal on their computer and the police or the district get wind of it, that they can go into the computer and they can access that information. That's really more what it's about, but it has farther-reaching implications, which is what you're describing, Donna, that other, some other districts are addressing, so. And I just, if I can just add to what other people have said, you know, Rob, I loved when you came in and, and the first thing you said was, we're going to put kids first in this district. And I feel like this is right to the heart of, of that matter, that if, if we're letting kids chat and game and watch Netflix and YouTube and, you know, do all those things online instead of doing their homework and their work, then we're not really putting them first because it's our obligation to make sure they leave here being able to critically think and read and write and all that takes time. And if you believe the statistics that, you know, 97% of kids use these Chromebooks in a passive way, which is just merely to be entertained via one of those forms. If, if that's even close to true, then, you know, Chromebooks aren't really adding much to what we're trying to do here. And so the only way they do add, you know, to add value is if we really cut that stuff off. So that's not even an option. No gaming, no social media, no YouTube, no Netflix, none of it. Because none of it has really, truly sustained educational value. Maybe a YouTube here and there, maybe some Netflix shows here and there. But overall, the downside so far outweighs the upside that I, I just don't think it's a good idea to, for kids to have access to that on any level. And I also think it's really important to start really thinking about screen time and the impacts of screen time in our schools. Because if a teacher says, well, my, you know, my kids only are on the, you know, screen for half an hour of, of class, but every teacher is doing that, you know, you're now three or four hours of screen time at school, if not more, and then another three or four at home and before you know it, you've far exceeded any recommendations for screen time. So I, I think we should have a policy on screen time. That's what I'm saying, we should have a policy on screen.
Okay. Any other comments on policy JS?
Kathy?
I just need some clarification, Rob, on the last sentence on page five. Under school district, make no warranties. Use of any information obtained via district technology resources is at the student's own risk. What is, I don't understand that sentence. So if we could get some clarification on that?
Yep, no, we'll make sure we get clarification. We're, we're taking, Laura's taking notes. We, this is all on video, so we'll be able to walk through and hear all of your comments, make sure they're all heard about. And as, as we bring this back to you, we can, we can bring that back.
Donna?
And just one last comment on page, I believe it's page four, which really reiterates what Shelley just said. I, I just would like to see, explore the wording on, schools are strongly encouraged to communicate with parents about the use of screen time. I just think that could be strength in that statement, are strongly encouraged. It, it just kind of leaves it out there very vague.
Other comments? Richard?
Yeah, on, on page five of five, the last sentence, well, the last paragraph, if you forget, the, the school district makes no warranties, says, should a parent or guardian have concerns about the access to, to technology? The district will make reasonable accommodations for the students within the educational environment. I'm not sure I'm understanding that, especially in light of all of the different inputs we've gotten from parents and during the whole course of, of talking about this. What, what, is this basically about what accommodations are we talking about?
What page do you want, I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow along.
Five of five.
And you're, the last paragraph, under school district makes no warranties?
No, before. The last paragraph on.
Student use is a privilege.
Student use as a privilege.
No.
Kitty, do you want to add something?
Well, I'm just saying, if I remember correctly, this was a sentence that we beefed up after our last one because it said that the district will, maybe the word, Donna, was explore, I can't remember, but it was not specific. And so we changed it to will make accommodations, not will think about it or whatever it was it said. But it, my understanding is this is if people don't want their kids using technology, that they can do that lesson or project or whatever it is without a computer. Am I correct about that?
So, so we're working on how to make this work. We're working on how to, to, to work with parents on this. I think the word reasonable accommodations is in there for some systems that would be virtually impossible. And when we bring this back, I can, I can bring you examples of, of a full opt-out. Right? But, but again, but, you know, the, the public, you know, parents, this is, you know, when I think about policy, they could hold us accountable to whether or not, think something's being reasonable or not. So, so I hear your concern and certainly our intent is to be reasonable and make accommodations.
So are we looking at having an opt-out portion in that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, yes.
Technology use.
Yes, so I'm not sure where that is in here, but, but yes, opt-out, opt-out is, is one of the accommodations.
Okay, other comments on JS? Want to move on to the next policy? I, I should ask, does this come back for study or do you think with some of these changes, people might be ready to adopt this policy? Knowing that a technology policy is going to probably change again? I mean, things that we just spoke about?
Yeah, I'm not sure that where staff is on that, but.
Right, I mean.
Yeah.
I would say, we have a couple of options. We can go through, work through with staff, make adjustments. We can share that with you all, right? And then give you an opportunity to kind of have a weigh-in and then, then check in and we can bring it for study action. But, but we want to be, you know, checking in with you, so.
Okay. All right. Do board members want to give feedback on JRCB and JRCB regulation? And these are privacy and protection of confidential student information? Anyone?
I have a question for Shelley. Oh, so I remember when we were doing cameras, Shelley, you were wanting to make sure that if there was a recording of a student, that it wasn't part of a student record or it was. I'm not sure if this addresses that. Do we want to make, do you remember that conversation? Does this address that concern? Okay, that's, I just wanted, I just remembered that conversation, so I was just curious.
I thought we did address it in the camera.
I thought we did too, but I didn't know if we needed to cross-reference it or if, or what.
I don't feel like that has the same context.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So, this, remember, we, we talked a little bit about the comment that's on this policy? The one that says initially, the superintendent or designated shall evaluate the district's practice with respect to vetting school service on-demand providers, the feasibility of parents and guardians opting in or out. We just discussed that, so. But that's not in or out of data sharing. Yeah, and the use of Chrome Sync. And I don't think we've gotten any sort of resolution on any of those, those issues. And it would be nice to, to have the staff's perspective on those before we vote to approve this policy. If you look at the red line of the policy, it's a comment.
It's four, right?
It's four, yeah.
Remember, we talked about how on-demand agreements are really just click-through policies and it's not clear what they do with student data? Because we don't sign a contract with them. It's just, you, you, just like any app on your phone, you hit I agree and you're agreeing. That, that's how Google works in this district. It's an on-demand provider. And it doesn't need to be. I believe that we could have a contract with Google that specifies, you know, exactly how they can share or not share our data and that that's what we ought to be doing instead of just accepting them as a click-through agreement.
Again, I'd ask for some help. If you have, if you have a, a district that you know that has kind of implemented that in policy, that would be really helpful for us to be able to reflect on and review as we, as we can, as we try to strengthen this.
Other comments on JRCB and its regulation? Shelley, do you have anything to add or is that?
I remember revising this policy a few years ago and it was about 10 pages longer with many more protections in it. So this is essentially the CASB policy. You know, I'm, I'm, you know, what we ended up with was that comment that I just asked about after all that discussion. So I just appreciate if we could address that.
Yeah. So would the board like to move on to the next two policies, JICG or really the policy and its regulation? Okay, so this is the. Yeah, the next one's coming up for study because we're going to hear what staff has to say about the paragraph that we inserted. Is that okay with everyone? That, that one's going to come back for study so that we can address the, the red line paragraph on page four? Okay, now what's, now being called PTDs, personal technology devices? And cell phones. That's a good one, Kitty. All right, any comments? We had some changes to this. We added the 504 plan, I see. We added the 504 plan, I see. Kitty?
I have one that I...even though I've read it, it just hit me right now. And this was actually my suggestion to add, where it says "Videography in any school location for purposes unrelated to educational outcomes is prohibited unless specifically authorized by a school employee." So would that include photography, or would we need to add the word "photography"?
I don't know.
So what you're saying is, suggesting is we add that kids can't take pictures...
Of each other.
They couldn't take pictures of each other at all in school? I'm just trying to think about the enforcement of that policy. It might be tough.
Yeah, I know. I know, because we're saying they can't take videos. I guess my purpose in this was to protect kids' privacies, you know, what Shelley said. Schools are finding out online things that kids have done when they were younger, and it's keeping them out of schools or keeping them out of jobs. And so I would just like to do everything we can to prevent that from happening while they're at school.
I think that comes from the right place in your heart. I think it's highly impractical. I do think that we could do a lot more education around the risks of what happens when kids make judgments that, you know, are not good, posting pictures that are going to endanger their futures. So I guess that is a good question. What are we doing, you know, to make sure kids understand that?
You know, I was just going to say, I was just thinking the same thing, and apart, you know, I don't think it's likely we'll get state legislation that requires a contract with people under 18 getting phones, but I'm thinking about it. But we could say that part of the privilege of carrying a phone to school is that you do go through a contract, like a PowerPoint, and you sign off, "I understand this, 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 and this," or something. I mean, that's getting a little in the weeds, but I just, I think we need to do a lot of education.
And I agree on the education piece.
Yeah.
I think that as we start to think about accountabilities and checklists and sign-offs and the management of that, and thinking about how over-leveraged our administrative teams are and in our schools, I get, I'm sensitive to that. But, you know, as we've talked about digital citizenship and increasing our ability to make sure that, you know, because, you know, you have kids that are, you know, eight, nine years old that have phones.
Yeah.
Right? And they have phones that their parents bought them, right? But some of that education, as we think about that, so I think that that really rolls into digital citizenship. And certainly, as we think about, you know, moving forward with digital citizenship, that's an opportunity for an information report to the board on what that could look like and our plan moving forward.
Well, and I would just add, a lot of this is being addressed oddly in our middle school health classes. And I do want to just acknowledge that the district has covered a lot of these topics that we've talked about, about digital citizenship, a lot of it in a health context. But so it's not as if it's being ignored, and I don't want to suggest that it is, because my children are of this age and clearly know what's right and wrong. So something is happening, so I don't want to be, to say that this isn't something that's going on.
I think that's true, but even so, the problem's getting worse. It's not getting better.
Well, and also, the age is significant, because this is in middle school, but we do see the phones coming in much younger.
And I think the digital citizenship, you have a point, Rob. There was an incident last year, it could have been two years ago, I think it was two years ago, because I was still teaching, and it happened at Boulder High, and a group dissed a teacher and put it on YouTube, put it online. So the police were called. You hate to have to learn that from actual experience. So I do think it's important to have them realize that these things, if they're going to make fun of a teacher or if they're going to post something, what the long-term consequences could be.
Let me ask a question on this one here, because I've seen situations where... I'm talking about the videography in any school location for purposes unrelated to educational outcomes, where a video has actually salvaged the reputation of a child because there was a video available that some kid took. And had that video not been available, then that kid would have been really up a creek. So that's a concern that I have with this one in particular.
I think that definitely works both ways, which is why police are wearing body cams now, you know, for the same reason. But what you don't want is somebody taking a video of a girl in a locker room or a boy in a locker room and posting that. So I think there's a good reason for that policy.
Okay, any other comments about these policies?
I do have a question. I don't know if I, if this is...I don't remember where this belongs in policy, but we did get that letter about that parents are having to agree to an acceptable use policy, but they can't actually see what the policy is. And I believe you were copied on that, so, but if you want me to resend that one to you. That's a concern to me, that they don't have an opportunity to read the policy that they're consenting to. And so what, and when they check it, I mean, what they're doing really is consenting to the use of their kid's, you know, data. So I feel like that needs to be really spelled out for parents before they check them.
Yeah, we'll make sure, we'll make sure we respond to that.
Yeah, thanks.
And I know when I used it, I was able to access the policy, so.
I just have a question that shows my ignorance. So if you're at a basketball game and you take a picture at the game with your friends, are you in violation of videography in any school location for purposes unrelated to educational outcomes? You are?
I don't think that's the spirit in which this is written. And so I think that we, you know, maybe we can work on the language a little bit. I think the spirit, I mean, you know, as kids live these connected lives with devices that they have permission from their parents to use, right, because that's how they have them. You know, I think that we have to be, we have to hear and understand what it is that we're worried about, but also not be too limiting so that we don't become unreasonable in a digital world.
Because I worry about uneven enforcement, if it's not clear. One teacher thinks it's one way, somebody else thinks it's another, and so that's, so... This is where I think I just defer to staff, but it was just a question I had when I was reading.
This is where policy gets challenging, right? Because we want to be vague so we can use our discretion and judgment, but we want to be specific so we can guarantee that we take care of what we need to do. I think this is the challenge, and that's why it's taking us some time to get these things right. But certainly hear both perspectives on that.
You know, the social reality, though, is, I think, is pretty different today. I think a lot of kids are being told at home, "Make sure that you have your video camera available if something happens and you want to record it." There's a lot of social injustices going on in society. Schools are not exempt from it. So I'm really concerned about that particular, that line, the redlined item on that, on this policy.
Kitty?
Well, I'm just thinking that perhaps we could add some language about safety, saying, you know, if you believe something's unsafe, that you could record it, or recording anything that's actually happening, say, in a performance or a game or in the classroom as an activity. My whole thing was this, is I just didn't want kids to record other kids who were just doing things kids do and then have that go up online and have it ruin their lives later.
I think those are maybe two separate things, you know, like that education piece can happen. But, you know, I'm hearing Richard here, that, you know, as long as you're not videoing in a bathroom, which I think is covered somewhere else in here, then I'm not sure that that should be called out as something we prohibit for the very reasons that Richard's saying.
Okay, any other comments on this policy or its accompanying regulation? Anyone? Because then we have one more item after this. Is that everyone good to move on? A quick break? Okay. Okay. This is our penultimate item, study item 10.1, District Unified Improvement Plan. So if you're not aware, every year we submit to the Colorado Department of Education an improvement plan, which is reviewed by the DAC and by staff. So I'll turn it over to Rob and Jonathan.
And I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan Dings, our Executive Director for Program Evaluation and Assessment, who is going to share with you, the board, our improvement plan. Jonathan?
Brief form, a rather long document you have a copy of, that is the proposed version of the Unified Improvement Plan we hand into CDE on either an annual or a biennial basis. We'll look at our BVSD performance in broad strokes as a context. We'll briefly review strategies that we talked about here in October. And then really, in the more interesting part of the work, I think, truly, is situating this in the broader strategic planning process that we're in the middle of, that the timing of this plan is perhaps a little unfortunate, in that the plan documents current year work, and there's a bunch of work going on to look at out-year work. So in our process, we really do rely on looking at patterns and data based on root causes, patterns and data that have been pretty stable over time, and root causes that we've identified historically. We've developed some particular strategies that are detailed in the planning document. And by the middle of next month, so after your next meeting, we'll need to submit a plan to the Colorado Department of Education. We are in the midst of a large process to develop a broader BVSD plan that talks about more than just the current year and next year work. And of course, there's some budget work here that you're very well aware of that will be done by June that's in the context of that broader plan work. The Colorado Department of Education classifies district performance with five categories. Boulder Valley's this past year was the highest of those categories, accredited with distinction. That was based on patterns in the data that we saw, that we were able to see well, I think because of the increased participation that we saw. Parents and students took tests at a higher rate than we've seen in the past few years. And we really appreciate that effort, as it gives us a chance to show our high achievement. And in looking at that data too, what we saw was a pattern of really very strong growth, particularly at high school, but also very good growth at the elementary level. However, patterns we've seen in the past stood up as well, which are significant gaps in performance, both in growth and in achievement for students served in special education, students eligible for induced learning, emerging bilinguals, and students who are Latino. This is our, this is a persistent problematic pattern in our data. This is the kind of pattern that's called out in the document that we have, but also spoken to, the kind of strategies that we worked towards. One of the main strategies is a multi-tiered system of supports. And there are particular steps going on at each school focused around working teams and in the documentation that's used relative to identifying students' needs and strengths and matching them up with appropriate interventions. Schools also have a social-emotional learning strategy that they get to choose with an emphasis on fostering connectedness and a positive relationships. Another category of strategies we have is around database problem solving and decision-making. And while that does overlap a bit with the multi-tiered system of supports, right, that's driven by data too. There are data cycles at schools, significant progress monitoring. School teams are expected to use data to examine the success of practices, such as around reading. And there's been an effort to reduce over-identification, forced-based education. All these are ways in which our educators use individual and school-level data to impact student success. A third category of strategies, and a big one, is around literacy, right? There are cross-content strategies at the secondary level. There's, the Read Act has been pushed up one grade level higher in the middle level. And there, and for, and then there's significant work around numerative tutorials at elementary grades K through three, including explicit phonics instruction, right, in funded stations being the major numerative tutorials introduced at kindergarten this year, going to the first grade next. And in thinking about this work, right, the part for us that's even more exciting than documenting the good work that's going on this year that schools are engaged in is looking at the planning work over the, for the next few years in terms of the particular work that's being done in the coming months. There was a great deal of work done to gather input from many stakeholders, parents and staff. And with that work, there was, there was an effort to identify important student outcomes. Those are done on the next slide in broad categories. But also to talk about the themes and the kind of strategies that we would use going forward. There was, based on the input that we got, there was an effort to refine that and make sure, checking back with people to make sure, and with you, to make sure we got it right and have the right work going forward. The work we're in the middle of now involves having convened teams to talk about the particular initiatives that will support work in these themed areas. So in terms of the work that we have, right, there will be work to identify more specific outcomes in these broad categories of priority student outcomes. All students benefit from challenging, relevant educational opportunities, right? We will reduce disparities in achievement, and that every student graduates empowered with the skills necessary for postgraduate success. The kind of strategies that will undergird this work come from the work in these themed areas in showing that all instruction is challenging, engaging, relevant, meets the needs of all students, providing schools and educators with responsive and customized supports to best serve students, harness the talent and passion of our community and families through communication, empowerment, and partnership, and cultivate a positive, inclusive culture throughout BVSD that promotes well-being of students, families, and employees. We're really looking forward to this work, are excited where it's gone so far. Exciting to see the teams involved in this, very engaged. And with that, I am prepared to answer your questions about the draft plan you have before you. Anything we need to change before bringing it back to you next time.
Thank you so much. Board members, do you have questions or comments for Jonathan? Yeah, Richard?
Looking at the last slide, Jonathan, where it talks about all students benefit from challenging and relevant educational opportunities as part of the strategic planning process. And the reason that caught my eye is because just last week I was talking to a Latino junior, goes to Fairview. And, because he's really planning his portfolio, getting things ready, because he wants to go to college and all that wonderful stuff. And he was asking, you know, if I had any information I could give him and provide to him and all of that. And I says, "Well," I said, "don't you have a counselor?" And he says, "Yeah." I says, "Well, maybe you should talk to your counselor." And then we were looking at the biliteracy seal. And I said, "Did you, are you going to apply for a biliteracy seal?" And he says, "Well, no." And I says, "Why not?" I says, "You speak Spanish, I mean, that's your first language." And he said, "Well, according to the requirements, it seems like I have to take a Spanish AP class to be able to qualify for a biliteracy seal." And I said, "Well, maybe you should talk to your counselor anyway, because I'm not sure whether that's the correct requirement." And then after looking into it, it's one of the requirements. So, and then I asked him, and I said, "Well, are you going to take AP classes?" I says, "Because if you take AP classes, it'll give you better chances to get to some colleges." And he said, and I asked him, I says, "Have you tried to take AP classes?" He says, "Well, the problem with AP classes is that I have to be recommended by a teacher for an AP class," or something to that extent. I'm just reiterating what the student is telling me, and this is what caught my eye in terms of students benefit from challenging and relevant educational opportunities. And if they have these obstacles already in the way, are we looking at trying to... What are some of these obstacles that kids have as it relates to challenging and relevant educational opportunities that they could benefit from?
Absolutely. Absolutely. That, we can't have stories like that in our district, right? And we certainly would need to understand, you know, what goes behind that. I think by having these priority student outcomes that have been vetted by the board, have been vetted by the public, that have been embraced by all of our stakeholders. our stakeholders, it really gives us the, the focus as we start thinking about those, those efforts and, and those opportunity and opportunity gaps. And Richard, to your point, access to advanced placement classes or any, any type of concurrent enrollment, dual enrollment is certainly, we need to make sure that all kids are having access to, as our Latino students in particular, to make sure that we're increasing their college-going rates and their graduation rates. And so as we think about the strategic initiatives that will sit within those strategic themes, I am confident that as you see those, especially around that priority student outcome number two, reducing disparities in achievement, that you will see the work that our district, will be ahead of our district over the next three to five years to make sure that we're addressing that.
Other comments or questions? Yeah?
So Richard, you're saying that to get the biliteracy seal, you have to take an AP class? Did I hear that right?
That's my understanding.
And?
As one of the requirements or one of the...
Right, and are those like state requirements or they are requirements?
I think they're coming from the state.
Okay.
I had a question on the CSLA, is it the Colorado Spanish Language Arts? Which, which of our students are most likely to take that test? And it also spoke to, we, our results were lower in third grade and higher in fourth grade. And does that tie into it all, the way that we're delivering bilingual education at our different campuses or is that irrelevant?
So, so the, so the test is, as you, as your question indicates, taken by third and fourth graders in, in our dual language programs. I was pleased to see that, see some movement upwards. As far as what drives some of this, the observation has been made that, that a decade ago, we tended to serve more, and this isn't true for each kid, but on average, we were more likely to be serving Spanish speakers for whom Spanish was their clear, strong first language and who may have, may have been slightly more likely to have moved here from, say, Mexico. Whereas many of the Spanish speakers we serve now, not all, this is not a statement about everybody, have been in a more multilingual environment. So a hypothesis we have is that this may have some impact on performance on Spanish assessments also. That said, I am happy to see the results have begun to improve and that, and the pattern is one, we'll be looking forward to see what, what, what comes about in this, this year's testing.
Okay, other comments or questions? Kathy?
In our earlier meeting, we heard that we're refreshing our look at root cause analyses. Can you talk a little about what that looks like, please?
Absolutely. So what we've asked schools to do is to engage in a process involving looking with, the intent is basically, basically teams of staff, possibly school accountability committees, and looking at an equity pattern in, in their, their data that presents for them a problem. The, the wide achievements that we, gaps that we see present a problem, the opportunity gaps as far as taking courses, all those are candidates for talking about as a, a problem. What we asked schools to do this, this, this time was to do the work a little deeper and in a context of asking about practices related to general education, practices related to intervention, and, and also the, the, the features of school climate and culture that may be a contributing factor to the particular pattern that we're, that is being seen. We would then ask them to, to go through a technique called the five whys, only in this case, the technique is modified to, to when you ask, why are we seeing this pattern, right, with the goal being you eventually get to an answer that has to do with the adults in the building, right? And what could the adults in the building have been doing differently to improve achievement for the group of students that isn't achieving as high or growing as high or doesn't have the opportunities as much as, as others have? But also to ask the question in addition to why, what evidence do you have for, for this data? So, so we've asked schools to engage in a deeper process. We'll be looking at the results of that. And indeed, that's part of the feedback, part of the input that's coming to our, our, our strategy teams, right? There, they've been, the results of that have been shared with those, 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 those groups in order to inform that work. So we'll, we'll be looking at that as a first cut at, are the kind of strategic initiatives likely to support and answer the question about what the adults in the building could have been doing differently to improve on the pattern that we see?
So Jonathan, I may have mentioned this before at some point over the years, but I remember doing these focus groups at Boulder High School on reading because the gap between boys and girls was so wide. And buying the boys pizza and sitting down with them at lunch and asking them what was going on. And it, it was fascinating because there was, there were kids from all different levels, you know, from AP to kids who were really struggling, all SES categories. And almost universally, they said, we're on our phones four hours a night after we get home at least, you know, usually gaming, so we don't really read. And we hate the books that our English teachers pick for us because they're all girl books, like Pride and Prejudice, things like that. And they also said that, that just in general, girls were more willing to please their teachers and so were more willing to do homework than the boys were. And so, you know, we talked a little bit about the implications of that, you know, where that was going to lead them. And it was an interesting conversation, but I feel like one of the reasons they opened up was because I wasn't a teacher. And I think that maybe if we're thinking about creative strategies at getting at real root causes, that maybe we need to think out of, out of the box a little bit and how to get the real information that, you know, explains the root cause.
Okay. Other comments or questions for Jonathan? All right. Thank you so much for all that you're doing and be excited to see the refresh on the root cause. Shall we go to agenda setting? Okay. So, so as we mentioned earlier, Rob and I have talked a little bit about what might be working and what might not be working with agenda setting. So I think we're going to have a work session with the board to talk about how to continue to improve our process. And the other piece I want to bring up on agenda setting is, this is, maybe this should have been in the public comment, but we do have board elections coming up in November, so Randy and Lori will be getting, Laura will be getting the information and the materials and the timelines for candidates looking to run for office. So, and we'll be trying to get those out as much as we can to the schools and the parent community and all that. So the, just so you know, that's on their radar and I think we're working toward that. Kathy?
So I remember you had forums or what, is that part of the plan then too?
I'm sure we will, yeah. Yeah, we're just getting, I think we're going to try and do it fairly soon, is that? Yeah.
When I have some time. And I, because I need to go back and see what exactly we pulled together two years ago. I want to say we did three of the forums where we invited the candidates to come and ask existing board members questions and see what the district maps were, where you were, what areas you would be representing. And then we need to get some publicity out there about that and make sure that the dates work with the board members.
Okay, that's great. Um, thank you. And then, and we'll eventually be having a work session with Heather again, so I don't think we've scheduled that yet, but we'll be going through that process again and, and figure that out. So what other items, and that would be where we would discuss like the biliteracy piece or whatever shape that's going to take. Any other items? Board members? If you, if you, do you check and make sure your items are on this list?
I actually have a working document that I've added.
Okay.
I don't have it on board docs. I can send it out in news and notes.
Okay.
That way you'll see it as a working document since nothing has been published on it yet.
All right. Any, anything else? Nope. All right, well with that, enjoy your snow day tomorrow. And that's it.